Okay, here we go, mic check. This is the podium mic first, podium mic, one, two, three, one, two, three. Podium, podium, podium. Check, one, two, three, one, two, three, podium mic, alright. Microphone number one, mic number one, check, check, one, two. Microphone number one, mic one, check, one, two, three. One, two, three, check, check, one, two. Is this better on number one? Mic number two, mic number two, 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 check, check. I'll turn two up, this is mic number three, mic three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Mic number four, check, check, one, two, three, four, mic four. Mic five, mic five, check, check, one, two, three, pop mic, mic five, well loud. Mic six, mic six. Gotta fix this one, microphone six, little tinny. And then this is the last mic, uh, on a stand, one, two, three, four, mic on the stand. Not to be confused with jalapeno on a stick. One, two, three, one, two, three. Okay, adjusting six a little bit, I think that sounds better. This is mic six. Thank you for catching my reference, this is mic five. And yeah, I think that's all the mics, uh, the podium again. So we should be good, good to go. Alright, going to mute, you can probably hear me. Going to mute right now, and three, two, one.
Simon's right there, Julie's right there. Oh, I love it, it's great, simple, it's perfect.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven thirty-three, if I can ever just stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a couple quick things before we begin, if you can silence your cellphones and hangers. And the emergency exit will be the door you entered, which is, um, to my left, your right, and behind you. Excused tonight from our meeting is Beth Prevelin, Board Trustee. Present today is Roger Brooker, Board Trustee, Ashley Drayer, Board Trustee, uh, Dr. Brian Graham, Superintendent of Schools, myself, Sue Barstow, Board Trustee, Jay Grover, Board Trustee, Joey Lamarcia, Board Trustee, Dave Verono, Board Trustee. We have Sienna Sarkis and Charlotte Tower, our, um, student representatives. Jonathan Patrick is here. Oh, Bob Markle is here, and Cheryl is here, and, um, June, who am I, District Clerk, sorry. Cheryl, you're behind the pole.
Sorry.
Alright. If I can get a motion, uh, for the approval of our agenda this evening?
A motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six, zero. And approval of our minutes from the August twenty-fifth meeting, please?
A motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six, zero.
Hello, everybody. Great to see all of our students here today, getting those, uh, government responsibilities taken care of early in the semester, well done, smart, smart, smart. So today, we get a chance to hear from Cindy Booker about her leadership here at Eco Island. I know a lot of our students who are here today have been to Eco Island in their elementary days, and Cindy, uh, you've been doing some remarkable work. Uh, maybe you can share with the board, uh, some statistics and some of the wonderful things that you've done.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that. So, let's start with the enrollment data. Since the time that I started working here, um, the first year, we had, and now it says the number of students, but it means the number of student visits. So there were some frequent flyers, which makes me very happy. I'd love to have the kids coming in. So in the first year that I started working as a, um, the coordinator here after Diantini, uh, we have one thousand one hundred twenty-four student visits, which was already a very good number to start with. Um, but I have continued in that trend, um, and last year I had over two thousand two hundred two student visits. And, um, that involves a lot of planning and coordinating with the, um, the teachers. I've been also doing a lot of block scheduling, so what I mean by that is that I would block off a week of time where I could have the third grade, uh, classes come from the schools. And we would have similar field trip agendas, itineraries, and so it makes it a lot easier for setting up. And also, it allows me the opportunity when I have done, like, let's say, five or six field trips in third grade, uh, teaching about, um, owls or owl pellet dissections. I can see which parts work really well, and I can start to tweak as I go through and see, um, what, what works better for the kids, what's maybe better hands-on, uh, management styles, and also concepts that we talk about, so. Over two thousand kids, a large portion of them are third grade students. The, uh, third grade, uh, classes have been coming in almost once a month at Eco Island. We have some really nice itineraries, and I know, uh, Mrs. Percival is here, and she's, uh, signed up already, she's got all of her forms in and everything, and it's wonderful, it really is. Okay, um, and next is that, uh, for the last couple of years, I've been working with a fellow Grand Island, uh, resident who was a student in the school system. Uh, his children went to Grand Island, and, um, one of his children was a child in my classroom. And I found out that he is a professional sign maker, so he donated his time and talent to make this beautiful Eco Island sign, which I kind of skipped right past. But it's over there, and it is absolutely beautiful. It's such a nice welcoming area, and... It's such a nice welcoming area, and we're hoping that it can also provide for photo opportunities with the kids. The space where the sign used to be, just today, I've been working with Phil Marino from Buildings and Grounds. And they are just a wonderful staff. Thank you. Very simply, the garden that was over where the original sign was, I asked if they could remove the stone and the weeds and everything, and I'm going to build some more, like, native plants, wildflowers, and maybe even some spring bulbs, to really get some of those opportunities for the kids to learn about the plants and the animals, and how they interact with their environment. So, really excited about that. So that's the sign. And also, I think that Tom is planning to work on an information piece that's going to go on the back of the sign. So it won't be just one-sided, it'll have some informational piece to it. In fact, I put this together that I shared with him, so some of that information, I can give you a copy of that. But it leads into the next slide. So one of my projects that I worked on this year, I was invited by a member of the committee to join the Grand Island Garden Walk this year. And I had so much fun with it, and it was quite the adventure. I started taking workshops, I joined the Grand Island Nature Alliance, it stands GINA, G-I-N-A. And, pardon me. I went to some workshops, and I learned a little bit more about native plants and their importance. So the photographs that I have listed on here are actually from the garden. I renovated the Pollinator Garden. It was the Butterfly Garden, I call it the Pollinator Garden now. So, in the first picture, you see a swamp milkweed. I actually started planting those about two years ago. And this year, we had monarch caterpillars on them. And a lot of leaf buds, too. I was pointing that out to the school board members on our tour. But the last, the third picture over there is an actual chrysalis. And to me, this was the really big moment for me, because in all the years that I've learned about butterflies and monarchs and milkweed and that, that's a very special sighting. It's the first time that I've had a chrysalis from a plant that I planted, so, yay! So, I think that from an educational standpoint, I wanted to include that. Like, okay, yes, I'm working on this in the summertime, but there is more of an opportunity for kids, even in the spring, the late spring, early summer, to see certain things that they might not ordinarily see. So, I'm really wanting to try to create a very biodiverse environment, where I'm having native plants, and that'll go into the next slide, too. They all segue to each other. One of the organizations that I joined was the Grand Island Nature Alliance. And they had this opportunity that I was working on tonight, as a matter of fact. I filled out my application to become, to have Echo Island become a Habitat certified status. And there's certain things that you have to meet as far as criteria and commitment to things. Trying to, you know, I don't have to water the lawn, that's great, you know, it's already taken care of. But having native plants, and really trying to do lots of other things, composting. They talked about bee houses, I bought a bee house kit. And so, in fact, I've got it in the foyer. I'd have to mail that back. I have an organization that's called Rent Mason Bees. And they're in the state of Washington. You rent a bee block, and they send you a mason bee block and a leaf cutter bee block that you can put up at your home, or your yard, or the farm, because they're for farms, too. And they will, there are cocoons, there's little egg cases where the mason bees will emerge. And it's very different from honeybees. So I do, I do a study and lessons, especially in the third grade, about the difference between mason bees and honeybees, and how they are solitary bees. They're native to the United States. They're not nearly as aggressive, or they won't sting you unless they're provoked. So they're very different. In fact, different from the little guys that were bugging Mr. Marino today. Those were actually wasps. Even though they're yellow and black, they're wasps, they have yellow legs. So bees tend to have black legs. But anyway, so, I'm working on this Habitat certification. And then, the last part that I wanted to share with you was something that is near and dear to my heart, is really giving the children of Echo Island more of an outdoor experience. I think that this building is absolutely stunning, amazing, and there are so many opportunities for the kids. But I also know that I need to get them outside more. You know, that's where it really is happening. And by creating a biodiverse environment, it also means having some safe trails for the kids to walk on. In the first picture that you see, I took a picture of one of the trails at the Nike base. And you see that there are some millings, there's some mulch in different areas. They need to have a wider path from which to walk. It's a little bit safer for them, and also is easier to manage as far as what they're wearing on their feet. Of course, they should be wearing boots, but there are some areas of our trail that are a little bit overgrown, and so they really need to have the shrubs kind of cut back. So in the second picture, is a picture of the back of the pond where we were walking. And it is rather narrow. So usually, when I have the kids walk, I say, okay, now it's time to go into a single file. Because I don't want them to be brushing up against the bushes as much. Not only because there's thorns, but also there's more of a likelihood that they can catch some ticks along the way. So, you know, we're never going to be fully away from, or free from, having ticks. So I think that it's important to teach children about how to handle things with certain precautions, to reduce the occurrence, and also teach the kids what to look for and how to handle themselves. I think that'll help them, not only in the classroom, but further on when they go home, when they go outside, when they go out in the fields. So that is the second picture of the pond area. And what I'm hoping to do, this is the entrance to the path that's on the side that I walked with the school board over today, just tonight. And it's a little bit overgrown on the sides, it opens up a little bit more. But then you get to the gate here, and the Buildings and Grounds have been doing a great job of trying to cut back. There are some areas that still need a little bit more work, and the millings and all of that, when we have the opportunities. This is what I was hoping that we might try to do, is achieve, like, even just starting with one loop. You know, Grand, Echo Island is a 49-acre site, so we have a lot of room for trails. The trails are already there, they were established back in the 1980s. But a lot of them are overgrown, and so they just need a little maintenance. The one area that where we stopped, there was a tree that had been felled. I brought Joe Killian from the Town Parks Department. He is, he's an expert, I think that Mrs. Markston can probably speak to that, too, as far as building the trails on Grand Island. And he came out in March, when it was still wintery and icy and snowy, and we walked around in the trails. And he said, even things like trees falling down, you could just take it and move them over to the side, and it acts like a berm to kind of help cut back on the growth, you know, of the trails. So once they get started, there's a little bit, a little bit of an investment in the time with putting the millings down and the mulch and that, but it will make it much easier to maintain in the future. So, I'm hoping that we can go in that direction. Okay, let's see, is there any other? No, that was the last slide. So, thank you, thank you so much for your time. Thank you for coming.
I just wanted to thank you. It was really great to see the outside, and toured the inside many, many times over the years. And it was really a great opportunity for us to see the trails and see what this facility has outdoors. It definitely has sparked some interest on our end, and I'm sure we will have some discussions, as we mentioned, on the trail out, while we are out and about.
Yes.
Maybe some volunteer ideas, maybe for some of our Boy Scout troops. And some of that milling and stuff, our town has millings and mulch, and maybe that's something we can discuss with them at our joint town board, school board meeting, that's usually, what, in January? It doesn't matter, it's coming up in the next couple of months, but there's definitely something we can put on the agenda, and maybe they can help us with that, too. But, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
And also, if there's any need for community service projects from high schoolers, I'd love to have them come in and help out, maybe make some burn desk boxes, some trail markers. If we are able to go in that direction, that would be wonderful.
I just wanted to ask our two students at the end, if they had been to Echo Island when they were younger, their thoughts on it? Questions, comments? You guys normally get to every meeting, right?
Yeah, I do remember coming when I was younger, and I do, I don't remember much, but I do remember enjoying it. But I also have a lot of younger siblings and cousins, and they love coming. My brother's in fourth grade now, so he came last year, but he loved it. Just getting out of the classroom, getting to explore something, it means a lot to them.
Oh, absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I also remember coming to Echo Island, those were some of my best memories when I was younger. And I think adding trails would definitely be a great idea. It would definitely allow them to get outside more and encourage them to stay outside more.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Other comment sections, we didn't have anybody sign up. Curriculum instruction, it doesn't look like we have anything for tonight, so personal and instruction. Buddy, have any questions? All right, then I will ask for a motion to approve instructional PI one through PI five, please?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six zero. Do you have any instructions?
I'll leave me, thank you.
Okay, on to personnel non-instructional, any questions before I ask for a motion? All right, then I will ask for a motion to approve instructional, or non-instructional personnel PNI one through PNI four, please?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six zero. On to finance.
So I have two items. Item A and item B are for action. Item A is a donation for our opening day presenter, J. Thank you, the phenomenal job. We have four donations for that. So thank you to those companies, Montante Campus, Young and Right, and I'm forgetting somebody.
Hudson Russ.
Hudson Russ, thank you, that's great. So thank you to those companies. And then, item B is obsolete textbooks. Item C is being switched to information. So, she's looking for motion or reaction on item Z and B tonight?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six zero.
And then, for item C, we have a presentation. Tyler's here to join us tonight for Cash Fest. I put the presentation materials at your desk there. So I will turn it over to Tyler.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tyler, I'm from Three Plus One. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I was actually at the New York State Association of Counties Conference, just down the road about 15 minutes, today. We have the privilege of serving 31 of New York State counties, and many more across New York, in terms of school districts, towns, cities, villages. And I just wanted to take the opportunity today to show you all what we can help Grand Island Central Schools with from a cash and investment standpoint. I always like to just start off by what we are not. So Cash Fest is not a bank. We do not take district deposits, and we do not make investment decisions on your behalf. Our goal is to really be an extension of your team, and aid the finance and treasurer's office in making those cash management decisions for the districts, so that at any point in time, no matter where the marketplace is, no matter where interest rates go, you can confirm that you're doing everything you possibly can to earn and save the most possible. Our data is really designed to maximize your financial resources, and that comes from a few different areas. It means, one, having a full picture of where your cash is. What financial providers are you using? What bank accounts do you have? What investments do you have? Having an online system to see all of that in one place, a consolidated view of your cash, that is really the bread and butter of where we start our analyses. And then it turns into, when we know where our cash is, what can we do with it? So, for example, the moment that you collect a dollar in tax revenue, so the moment that same dollar needs to be spent, identifying its time horizon. How long is it available for? That way, when you were making an investment decision for districts' tax funds, you know exactly how long that cash is available. The three pillars of public finance are safety, liquidity, and yield, in that order. So, one, making sure that first, your cash is safe and collateralized. Two, making sure you have adequate cash on deposit to pay for payroll, pay for accounts payable, cover capital projects, maybe even build some trails right in our backyard here. Really, we are a third party, and we provide objective data to make those decisions with confidence. At the end of the day, we are seeing districts being scrutinized across the state right now, especially from the New York State Comptroller. And a lot of the areas that the Cash Fest program is helping with combat those audits. That includes issuing regular rate quote requests, identifying where is the best place to put district taxpayer funds, and how long can we safely invest them without sacrificing our ability to operate. It also includes doing forward forecasting. So, districts have a very unique cash flow cycle in New York State. You bring in taxes about a month from now, and then slowly throughout the year, overall balances decline. Our job is to work with you all and collaborate with your financial providers to ensure that any time of the year, no matter how much cash you have, no matter where interest rates are, we're looking under every stone and finding the best opportunities for you all, and giving you the confidence to know that you're maximizing your taxpayer resources. We also provide a one-to-one guarantee. So if we cannot identify new revenue or savings opportunities that meet or exceed our annual fee, you don't pay for the program. We don't think that's right for the taxpayers, and we want to make sure that you're seeing value from it. We also understand, though, that a lot of the benefit from the program is not necessarily earnings and savings, it's also the time savings as well. Having the confidence that a third party is looking at every single piece of your financial picture, and ensuring that you're doing the right thing for the taxpayers, that's a big component. Collaborating with your financial providers, and making sure that you have an equitable banking or investment relationship, looking at every single line item on your statements, every debit, every credit, all of your fee-related items. Cash Fest aggregates and analyzes all of that for you. And we are really grateful for the opportunity to serve you and Grand Island Central Schools. So, welcome, any questions that you have, but wanted to keep this short tonight, so thank you again for the opportunity.
I have a couple questions. So first of all, obviously, you would have access to all of our financial information. What level of confidentiality do you sign? And second part, what do you have access to that our finance officer does not? Like, everything that you just said, we can do. So, what do you provide that we cannot do ourselves?
Yeah, can I hit on your first question?
Yeah, you can, it's kind of a two-part, I know.
Thank you. So, first part, obviously, safety and security of your data is paramount. And the safest and most secure way that we can collect your transactional data is through view-only access to your banking providers. We're very familiar with the institutions that you all use. And view-only access only allows us to download allows us to download bank statements and debit and credit history. So we can't touch your cash, we can't move it, we can't make investments on your behalf. The only thing that we can do is have read-only or view-only access to it to download transactional data, which is in turn what gets put into our online portal, the Cash Fest portal. And our analysis is a little bit deeper than just looking at a bank statement. So if you ever look at a bank statement, you've got your debits, your credits, the dollar amount, the description, is it a check, is it an ACH, is it a wire? We look at all of that for a multi-year history and our stress test models can identify how long you need a dollar, from the moment that you collect it to the moment it needs to be spent. And we're able to identify liquidity levels, which show you for each bucket of the district's cash, how long is it available for? And then in turn, pairing that with how the marketplace values your cash. It's one thing to just keep all of your cash liquid and available at the bank, but going into a dynamic interest rate environment like we are going into right now, the Federal Reserve is expected to change interest rates on September seventeenth, and having the data to show how long your cash can be invested and where you're going to see the best opportunity for it, that is going to enable you to protect your interest revenue line and the budget into the future. Now, that's just one component of the program. Um, it also includes looking at your bank analysis statements, so you may or may not be paying banking fees directly or indirectly. And we look at those analysis statements, which are typically in the neighborhood of about sixty pages a month. We look at every single line item, what services are you using, what is the cost, are they appropriate for the district? And collaborating with your financial provider, who, by the way, is also a financial provider to many of your peers. So because we work with so many districts across the state, we can see what type of arrangement would be most beneficial for you all and if it's equitable based on your provider. Does that help answer your questions?
Can you just touch real quick on the contract or commitment that will be required of the, of the district for your services?
Yeah, thank you. So it's, there's no specific term with the contract. We do ask that if we identify new revenue and savings that exceeds our fee, that you allow us to help you implement those recommendations for the first year. And then at any time with thirty days' notice, you can, you know, we can go our separate ways, but beyond that, there's no commitment to the district.
And what's the fee?
It's about nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and it's based on your budget.
And that's per year?
Correct.
And when you indicated goes beyond allowing you to implement, is there an additional fee associated to that?
After the first year?
What you just said, you don't before giving us your fee amount? Um, yes.
Yeah, the nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
There, there's no additional fee beyond that.
Okay.
That would be the annual fee, that it would be that amount. Their annual fee is based on a portion of your budget size. Uh, I forget exactly what it is, but with this year's budget, the fee comes up to about...
So as our budget goes up, our fee goes up?
Correct.
And the fee is only based on the amount of our budget, not money raised?
When you say money raised, do you mean...
Well, let's just say, you know, so this year on our own, before we contracted you, we were able to raise a million dollars with moving money around, just throwing a number out there.
Sure.
Next year, with your help, with, with your company, we exceed the one million dollars, we, I don't know, let's say one, one, two million. So now we've kind of increased our revenue by that, two hundred thousand dollars. Do you get a portion of that?
We do not.
If I can just add on to some of Tyler's remarks and why I brought this to the board. So, you know, when I started here a couple of years ago, our, our, most of our money was only being invested in money market accounts at like a two percent interest rate. So the year before I started, I think the interest was about two hundred and seventy thousand, what we got into, and so I worked with Lori Bowser, our treasurer, to search out other options. We found night class was one option, um, so we started using them. At the time, the interest rate was north of five percent, like five point one, five point two, something like that. Since then, it's dropped quite a bit, down to four something. Um, but we've also invested in treasury bonds, so all of our investments have to be one hundred percent collateralized by cash. There's no risk involved for us, so both the treasury bonds and night class are, are one hundred percent collateralized by cash. That being said, the reason why we're looking to work with Cash Fest is that, uh, you know, Lori Bowser and I have done a lot to take a look, you know, we, we meet pretty much weekly to discuss our cash on hand and when we need to move money, we try to keep as much invested as we can at any given time. Typically, we pull back from those investments as we cover payroll. So every couple of weeks, we'll take a look, see what's coming out, what's going in, and then we'll pull money back to cover payroll. What Cash Fest will allow us to do is, is, uh, two things, well, actually three things really. Number one, it'll allow us to have much tighter margins than what we currently have. So Lori and I kind of have some thresholds on our accounts that we're comfortable with, but we don't have the, the computing power that this software has to say, okay, you know, we're, we're going to take this down to a half a million balance instead of a million balance. And, you know, half a million extra per day at a four percent rate is about fifty bucks. So, you know, if we have half a million from this account, half a million from this account, we could be making an extra hundred bucks a day, multiply that by three sixty-five, you've covered their fee already. Other ways that they can help us is they'll help us shop instruments. So normally the money in night class, they send us, uh, well, that, that has an average daily rate. The treasury bonds, uh, once those mature, uh, the gentleman from JP Morgan Chase sends me the information on the new bonds, uh, so we can do one month, two months, three months. So usually we just select what we think is best, uh, based on what we're going to need coming up and the rates that are offered, and we, we reinvest in that. Cash Fest will actually help us go out and shop that, but, you know, they'll, they might be able to get us longer, better rates for longer terms rather than, you know, just taking what, what he's got. For us to, you know, be shopping that on a regular basis, we don't have the manpower in the business office to do that and, and that's what they can help us do. Um, and then the third thing is looking at the actual fee that the bank charges. So the bank likes to bury a lot of these fees, so we don't see them. I've, I've asked them a few times, uh, they're not very forthright with the fees. So, uh, Cash Fest actually digs down deep, looks at those fees, makes recommendations, hey, you might want to switch to this type of account because your fee will get better. They'll also help us shop things to get better fees from the bank. So with those three things, uh, that's why I brought it to the board. I'm very confident that they will earn, earn us or save us what their fee has, save us and help us earn that and then some. So, um, that's really why I brought it to the board for, for your consideration. So, thank you very much, Tyler.
Also, I, other board members might have questions. I just, I, I just, um, you know, prior to your arrival, the interest rates were a little different.
Correct.
And it didn't make sense to do investing.
Agreed.
But everything you just mentioned is how we spend our time in the office. Um, so that's why we're a little...
I'm happy to continue, JP Morgan, for sure.
So I have a question, um, just because I'm not sure how it works in education. With our bank accounts, are they reconciled by an internal bookkeeper on premises, by the district, monthly, quarterly? And I know we've talked about the positive pay system as well to be able to recognize. So in the private sector, like at my company, we have onsite bookkeepers and our onsite bookkeepers, they not only deal with positive pay and the checks and all that, but they also, um, deal with the individual fees that go with the accounts. And those particular fees are done, um, negotiated with our office, with the banks to either reduce them, move them, whatever you have to do. And the reason, I know this is a signatory on the account, I'm one of the partners that has to sign off on that. So a lot of that is taken care of internally and I, I can't, I don't want to equate the private sector to education, but the way I kind of look at it is how I see it daily, is that's something that we do in-house. I also took a look at your contract, um, just briefly. It is a pretty, I don't want to say basic, but it, it's, I would want, if we were to vote for this, I would actually want our district attorneys to take a look at this contract. It's in, it's in there. Because your privacy confidentiality has some verbiage in there that's a little general for me, like your sole discretion. Well, you are going to have access to district information. And again, I know with my company, we, because we represent banks, so I am a bank attorney also. So we have to have so much security and multi-factor authentication, we have to have certain servers, we have to have certain backups to be able to ensure that the bank account information and the loan documents that are coming in for our clients do not accidentally get distributed elsewhere. So when I look at your confidentiality, it is, you know, you're using reasonable efforts and you're using, there's verbiage in here at your sole discretion, where I would feel more comfortable having our district counsel take a look at this and scrutinize this a little bit more because of the personal information that you would have if that got leaked because of our district funds. So that's my comments on this for today.
I have a question with respect to the percentage of fee and the, the right to terminate the relationship, right, within thirty days? So that fee would be paid, um, upfront in, in full for the school year?
We typically charge on a quarterly basis.
Oh, quarterly, okay.
Except for this year, your contract says you're going to pay it upfront for the full year and then the subsequent years it would be quarterly. I also didn't see in this contract that we could terminate, so I don't know where it is. I mean, I've just been looking at it, you know, at this point in time, but it's only a four or five-page contract. I don't see any termination verbiage in there at all.
Was there anything in the separability section towards the end?
So you have, they reserve the right to cancel your account without obligation by giving thirty days' written notice to another party intent to terminate after the first full calendar year of services.
Right.
So we have to undergo a first year, pay the full nineteen, where we wouldn't be able to terminate prior to.
You are correct. We only bill the initial one-year fee after we've shown you that the service is going to generate new revenue or savings.
When is that? So the full year fee, so do we pay that at the end of the full year?
No, you pay it upfront.
Upfront, okay. Well, that's what I thought, I was just confused when you, with this, with your response. Um, okay. And then, but, well, what if you don't fulfill your end or what if we're not happy with your end? Then we, we're stuck for that year, that's a loss to us, just to be clear.
We don't actually send you the invoice until we've shown you that benefit that exceeds the fee.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
So in essence, you have to make us nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars before we charge.
Well, so we can't actually make the money for you. You don't want us to make...
Or find us.
Right. We have to show you that by following the recommendations from the data, it's going to lead to new revenue or savings that exceeds the fee. And until we've shown you that, we don't invoice you. What we found is, in the past, we didn't charge upfront and what would happen is, we would show districts what the opportunity was and how to realize them, and then they would just do it and then we wouldn't get paid and then we don't have a business.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have one more informational item, Drivers Ed. Uh, do you want to discuss that at all?
Yeah, I'm just going to give the board an update, um, then if they have any questions who might be able to help. But, uh, working with Bob and Jamie, uh, we began to look at, uh, the past few years and understand how often we have run Drivers Ed, how often we didn't, uh, the number of students that are required to run it, and, uh, layering in the significant increase that would be incurred by following the New York School Insurance Reciprocal's, uh, recommendation. So to move forward and to keep this as information, Jamie and I have talked along with Bob and, Jamie is going to create a needs survey, a needs assessment, and send it out to, I would assume, eleventh and twelfth grade families to see whether or not there's an interest in pursuing Drivers Ed here at Grand Island, but while also paying the full amount that is recommended by, uh, the extra insurance. So we're not asking for the board, uh, to take action, but we do want to just survey the community to see if there's an interest, because it is a significant increase and we're worried that it'll be prohibited, uh, for families to spend thirteen hundred dollars for Drivers Ed. But...
It's like, what, thirteen hundred with the recommendation?
Yeah, it's thirteen, one thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars per student.
Yeah, I mean, you can private losses for four hundred.
Yeah, so we want to examine all of that.
And did we, did we put in here, I'm sorry, how many times it has been canceled? I think the last two summers it's been canceled, correct of the...
Well, I can answer that. So Jamie put together a report, um, I don't, I didn't bring the report here, but it looked like it was canceled, um, I would say, it's, it has certainly run, but it has been canceled multiple times. So I don't have the exact number. I didn't want to put Jamie on the spot.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, we, we discussed the, um, the stipend, so it didn't run this past summer, right, this past summer it didn't run. And I don't believe it ran last summer because one of my friends, her son signed up and she was scrambling for an option. I, that number is really important, right? Um, we, it's, it's easy to survey people and say, yes, 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 we're going to use it, because they don't know what the other options are, right? So we could survey our eleventh and twelfth graders, but I think it's important to put in that survey what the economics of other options look like, right? If, if you believe that's the only option, I mean, I don't know, I just want to make sure that when we're surveying, they have the whole picture, right? Like, I don't know, I mean, thirteen hundred versus four or five hundred, right? In their private versus three other kids in the car. I mean, I don't want to discourage the program, I mean, it's been, it's been around forever, but I, I think we need to, while we're surveying, make sure that our families and students have the full, whole picture. I, I don't know.
Yeah, we haven't put the survey together yet, but we would like to survey the community, make sure that before we make a, a decision to cancel it...
Right, right, no, I understand.
Because there would be the opposite reaction, right? So we want to be able to look at the data, we'll share the data with the board, uh, and create a, a very transparent survey so that they have as much information, uh, perhaps. And I just want to be cautious not recommending certain people in the...
No, I'm not saying recommendation, but that there are, you know, that there are other services out there in this...
Absolutely. And, and the difference, right?
Not names, right, but...
Right, right. Yeah, because some, some people, my son, you know, we hired somebody and he had his instruction, uh, and I understand that there are five-hour courses that people can take going through private entities. So I think we can layer that into a survey, but I just want to be cautious before we say we're canceling Drivers Ed.
For sure. It's, you know, but it's also, you know, what happened to a friend of mine, she was signed up and the program didn't go and then she was scrambling, right? So we don't, definitely don't want to do that either, right? And that wasn't, I don't think that was this last one, I think it might have been the one before. I don't know, sometimes my thoughts at the time is a little mischievous, but anyways, yeah, so. But no, I think the survey is a great idea.
Yeah, thank you so much. So Jamie, work on that, share it with Bob and I and Hillary, of course, and then we'll push that out, get some data and bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, on to special education.
She's behind my wall. Ow!
Good evening, everybody. Um, if I could have action for my special education CPSE and CSC program recommendations, please.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six zero.
Six zero.
Thank you. On to superintendent's report.
Yeah, there's two items here. Uh, one is an action item. Each year annually, the Board of Education approves the safety plan, which is posted currently on our website. People have had a chance to comment and I stayed late one day in case anybody wanted to talk to me about the plan. Uh, so the plan is here, of course, and, um, once the board takes action, then I share that plan with the state education department so that they have a record. then I share that plan with the state education department so that they have a record that that plan has been approved.
Everybody have any questions before we make a motion? Okay, then, uh, motion to approve superintendent's report A.
A motion.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six, zero.
All right.
So this, uh, just a little bit of a presentation of board, as you know. Uh, we just opened up school and, uh, it's really been off to a great start. As the board knows, and since you were, uh, present, uh, we had a great program, uh, to begin the school year with our faculty and staff. Stephanie Anderson helped our little ones do the pledge of allegiance, which was really a special moment. And of course, our, uh, students sang the national anthem of the Grand Island Alma mater, which I'm still learning. I, I know most of the words, so.
You're very much better.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, we also honored all of the art students in our school district who have their art published in the calendar that was printed and, uh, delivered to all the families. So it's really a special moment when your art has been chosen to be in the calendar and to be out, uh, in people's homes. Eight thousand, uh, or more residents received that calendar. So it was really a special time to recognize our artists and their teachers. Sue, you did a great job with your presentation, your speech. We also had our union, uh, leaders speak, and we had student leaders speak. So we're very proud of our students who were, uh, well spoken and told stories of inspiration and influence and how faculty and staff have led them to have a wonderful experience here in our school system. Additionally, uh, there's, the big focus this year is about engagement, empowerment, and belonging for everyone, every day. That was, uh, the big theme of our staff development day. And as, uh, Bob shared with you earlier, we were able to bring in a keynote speaker, Jay Senke, who not only, uh, was an engaging speaker, but he believed in the concepts of engagement, empowerment, and belonging, while also interacting with our teachers and faculty. He also happens to be a magician, which I appreciate, so he did a great job. That program wrapped up with our middle school students, uh, performing a song from a Dr. Seuss musical. And, uh, we can't thank our music teachers enough for preparing them to present, uh, over the summer and to present to our students. Uh, all of us, our, the district office administrators had a chance to visit every school. Uh, so here are just some beautiful, uh, images that I took, uh, in all of our schools, thanking, uh, Principal Petula. And, uh, for the first day of school, students just excited and experiencing joy right away by being in school with their teachers. So these are just, uh, images that, uh, represent, uh, our students and their first day. Uh, as you know, at the middle school, we have the Where Everybody Belongs program. Um, many of our eighth graders, uh, did so much work over the summer connecting with their, uh, students who are sixth graders or new students, and our eighth grade leaders are their mentors. Uh, and it's not just a one-day experience, it, it continues out throughout the entire year. This is just a group picture of all those web leaders being recognized on the first day of school. And then, of course, uh, they do such a great job with music and clapping and even pom poms welcoming the students as they walk into, uh, school. And, uh, I also captured just some faculty and staff, uh, being thoroughly engaged, uh, and excited as they came to school that day. So there's a little bit of a gauntlet of eighth grade leaders, uh, on the sidewalk, and all the kids entering school are being, uh, applauded and cheered and recognized by their peers. So, uh, going on to Sidway, I wanna thank, uh, Mark, who took some beautiful pictures. And, uh, we saw all of these, uh, children, actually, this is still the middle school, sorry about that. And here we go, here's some Sidway students coming off the bus and entering school. It's a little rainy, but not too bad. And, uh, you can see the kids, uh, really, uh, happy to come to Sidway, meet their new teachers, meet their new principal. Uh, it was a great moment, and of course, as you can imagine, Teresa Liza Day was there as well, uh, making sure everything was running smoothly and safely for the children. Lots of great images there. Pegabine, right away, I have a chance to see children in physical education, uh, playing games and having a good, uh, time as well. And, uh, as we move along, you know, some of those precious moments where, uh, teachers taking a picture of their student and, you know, being in school for their first day of school, just a really, uh, beautiful opportunity. And I'm sure by the end of the year, they will, uh, compare and contrast, uh, the first day with the last day as the kids were coming to school. A lot of smiles, a lot of engagement. Uh, I think this is Mrs. Batte's song right here, she was very happy. And I did capture one, uh, high school student who's a senior, who got twenty twenty-six on her jeans and her senior, uh, T-shirt. She was, uh, equally excited. This is Jude's daughter, who's a teacher, and, uh, she was, uh, having an opportunity with her kids as they sat in a circle and were sharing with her information about themselves and about the summer. And, uh, transitioning away from the first day, I do wanna pay attribution to Alicia Zeprowski, who's our varsity girls' swim coach. Take a look at that, there's about thirty to thirty-eight, uh, athletes in our women's swim program. That, I think, is the most I've seen in my tenure. That's a real tribute to, uh, Alicia and her program, really excellent. So, um, so that's about it. Uh, as you know, we have on our website the Viking tip line that any parent or community member can communicate with us if there's an issue. And if anybody in the community wants to email the board, they can do so here. Does the board have any questions about the first days of school? All right, and then additionally, uh, Sienna was on WKBW TV this evening at five and six o'clock along with Hillary Kretz Harvey and Aiden. And they were part of a story following up about the cell phone ban and reactions from our students. And she did a fantastic job, and so did Aiden. So just for the board to know that that was on, uh, at five and six o'clock tonight.
Do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, I honestly, I've been really liking the cell phone thing. I feel like it's different for everyone, but me personally. It was an adjustment at first, but I've been really liking it. It's nice having a lot more conversations with my friends. Being my teachers, especially at the end of class and during lunch, it's not like, oh, pull out my phone, just be on at all of lunch. My friends and I talk to each other. Um, my friend Lexi and I brought coloring pages and coloring books to color during lunch. Um, it's just, it's a lot more positive than I thought it was gonna be. And I really do enjoy it, and I think in the long run, it's gonna have really good impact.
Do you wanna comment?
Share anything else?
Did you wanna share on it, or you don't have to, I don't wanna put you on the spot?
I feel the same way. I definitely think it's, it was a little bit of adjustment, but I feel like really it has been nice just talking to people and actually like interacting without distraction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, public comment session, we didn't have any signups, so we'll move on to the committee and poll items and information roundtable, and we'll start with you, Roger.
I just wanna say welcome back to everybody, and, uh, I'm glad to see that the cell phone initiative is going pretty well. The kids seem to be, um, you know, I'm handling it in my, my capacity too. But overall, I think it's, uh, it's a positive thing. And, um, yeah, congratulations to, uh, start of a, another great start to the year.
Awesome. Okay.
Just wanted to thank Cindy for the tour. I did not know that was even back there.
Oh, really?
It's so wonderful back there. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Oh, thank you so much. Joy, appreciate it.
I know that, thank you.
Do you know?
Awesome, thank you, Cindy.
Yes.
Thank you.
John? Bob? Cheryl?
Awesome, thank you.
Jude? Did I miss anybody? It's so weird to have the table, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just have one important thing, this is for everybody at the table and everybody in attendance today. I'm gonna say a few words, and you can all react or not react to the words I'm gonna say. There are four words that I'm gonna share with you today. And those words are, hey, eh.
Hey, eh.
That's all, thank you so much.
Um, I just really wanna add to, uh, the opening day. Um, I really enjoy attending, I don't necessarily like to speak. Um, but, uh, it was, it's, it's, it's a great morning, it's great to have everybody gathered together, and I really enjoy when the students get up and speak and they talk about their journey. And I love that they, they bring up their teachers and their, the people that have influenced them, and they really reach all the way back to elementary school. And it's really a great reminder, um, of what, what we do here and, and what is so important. So it's just, it's just a great event, I like it, well, not as much as graduation, but, um, yeah. So I thank you for including me in, in that, in that day, and, um, yeah, so. Anyways, I'm gonna adjourn because we are all tired, because we were all up too late watching what we did last night. So, uh, just one important date, October sixth, we will have our next board meeting, and that will be at Sidway. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-nine?
A motion.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried six, zero. Thank you. Go Bills.
If students wanna bring their papers up to get signed before they.